I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
And we're all here this evening. Under public participation, as public comment period, any member of the public that wishes to address the board on any topic, now would be your time.
I think you pretty much all know who I am, but my name is Dave Kennedy. I work at, or I live at 138 Jefferson, and I've been here the last couple of months. I came in again to ask if the board, the mayor, the village administrator, if there's anything they can do to assist anybody with the problems we're having while you're looking for a long-term solution. I noticed about four to five days ago, and I was just speaking to Todd, that I've noticed a, like a metallic aftertaste in the water now, whether I use the tap or whether I use water from the refrigerator that has a filter in it. Now, if I use bottled water, which I take to work, like a lot of people do, there's no aftertaste, but it's almost like a metallic aftertaste, so I thought maybe they had started to implement the chemicals into it, which is not the case. I'm still, I've got my water bill. I just used about 18,000 gallons. When you divide the number of filters I've used, I'm getting roughly between 16 and 1,800 gallons per filter, when it clearly states on the filters that I should get one to two months or up to 8,000 gallons. Still got the problem. I know you guys are working on a long-term solution. I have complete faith in Todd and Public Works of doing that, but at the same time, the water portion of my bill was $60. I've spent $40 in filters. I'm just trying to figure out a way to get some help from somebody. I mean, it's just, that's a lot, and I know it's not all, Mr. Mayor, your time, it was before with Marilyn, but at the same time, I have brought this up now three months straight, and I've yet to get anybody to say, yes, I will help, or no, I will not. And I guess if no, I will not, then at least I know where I stand, but without getting a answer one way or the other, I just go from month to month and just keep coming back, waiting for somebody to say something. It just, it's just, it's hard for me to understand how, since I brought it up and everyone knows that the problem is in the pipes. It's not in my service line, it's not in my house, it's not in your water treatment plant, it's in the mains. Why can't I get some help until a permanent solution has come about? And I guess that's my only question.
Some help is not completely out of the question, but from where I sit, and I'll, Todd will handle this in just a second, until we had an understanding of what's actually going on, it'd be kind of irresponsible, I think, on our part to say, you came in, you have a problem, here's $10, $20, and then all of a sudden you have, you know, 40, 50, 60 homes with similar issues. So we really just needed to take a good look at that, and with that, I'll ask Todd to...
Mr. Mayor, we, staff has continued to investigate and talk about this, and we've identified 40 homes that we either know of only a handful to be affected, but given where those houses are relative to homes in between and served by the same main, we've identified 40 homes that could be experiencing a problem. We are planning, in fact, tomorrow we have a Water Works meeting in which, at which time we're going to set the date, but we're planning a community meeting specifically for residents of your area to discuss what our next steps are, where we are in the process. That meeting will be scheduled sometime for early or mid-January. Like I said, we're going to set that date tomorrow in a meeting. And we're also working to finalize our recommendation to the board, which was going to be a $25 credit on two consecutive water bills for those 40 homes we've identified, so a total of a $50 credit. As I'm sure you can understand, when you, when you start to multiply the number of homes, you know, our, our hands are a bit tied with the resources as far as what we can offer, so I know that's probably not a number that overwhelms you. In its generosity, however, that's, that's, just to give you a little background, that was our, our recommendation that would be forthcoming. Now, that is still pending board approval, but...
Okay.
I, I guess the only thing I can say is, you know, I appreciate anything the board can do. I know Todd's doing everything he can, but before it was, I was the only one bringing this up. And then the last two meetings that I've been to, more people came in, which I don't see any of them here tonight, that were bringing them, that were bringing it up too. And now that it's a possibility of 40 homes being involved in this, you know, it was, when it was one home, it really wasn't anything to deal with, you know, it was just my problem. Now that it's 40 homes, possible 40 homes, it's almost that, it's too big to deal with, you know, to handle. So it's kind of like, by pushing ahead to try and get something done, it's, you've identified the problem, and, you know, Todd's taking, taking steps to take care of it, but the time span to do it, you know, is, is taking a little bit longer than what I would anticipate a reaction from, you know, the trustees and the mayor and that for. I mean, if the problem does exist in the mains, then why can't they help the people that come forward with the problem? Maybe some people don't care. Maybe some people are so used to it that it's not anything they want to deal with. But I'm sure if you're not used to it, or you don't want to deal with it, it's a problem. And a lot of people have a problem coming in and speaking before you guys, and I really believe that because it's a bit intimidating. Shouldn't be, but it is, you know. So I appreciate everything Todd's doing. I'm just hoping that I know what he's talking about, but at the cost of the filters, six bucks apiece, you know, that'll handle two months, but if this chemical doesn't work, what then? I guess is my question. You know, I leave it open-ended that, you know, if this chemical doesn't work, what happens then? So, I appreciate your time. I won't take up any more of it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, moving on, we have many items on the consent agenda. I'll read those and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of November 23rd, the building report for November of 2015, accounts receivable report for November of 2015, accounts payable through November 10th, 2015, cancellation of the December 22nd, cow, cancellation of the December 28th, village board meeting. Ordinance 1687, providing for the abatement of the 2015 tax levy on general obligation water work system alternate revenue source refunding bonds series 2007. This is a waiver of first passage on the second. I'm going to abbreviate the rest of those, so I don't have to say all that. Ordinance 1699, also providing for the abatement of a 2015 tax levy. Ordinance 1703, providing for the abatement of a 2015 tax levy. Ordinance 1704, providing for the abatement of 2015 tax levy. Ordinance 1705, same thing. Ordinance 1706, also the same thing. If there's any questions on those, we do that last meeting of every year, I think.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
I carry a six-year, thank you. Took me longer to read it than it did...
Thank you.
All right, items for separate action. Item A, we have ordinance 1698, adopting the tax levy for 2015. This is the third time we've talked about it, the second reading. With that, I will turn it over to our Director of Finance, Justin Van Voren.
Thank you, President Brawley. In front of the board tonight is the tax levy as it was presented at both of the previous meetings. The total net levy for the corporate general levy is $2,153,988, and the levy for the special service areas is $353,000 in total. If there are any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Questions?
I have a comment or two. I know that everyone on the board has considered this issue pretty thoroughly and pretty seriously, and I have been an opponent of tax increases pretty regularly for, every time this issue's come up. This is a very modest increase request, and I've looked at it, and looked at it, and looked at it. It is almost the equal of the increase in our health insurance costs, which we can do nothing about, and of course, we have other costs going up as well. I'm going to support it because I think it's important to the health of the village, and I believe it represents a very modest burden on our residential and our commercial taxpayers.
I would, I want to thank staff. I know it's their job and their responsibility to try and get us every penny that they can. Taxation is not popular. Ever since I've come into office, I know that we've held taxes where they were. We've never taken the incremental increase which we were allowed. That being said, I would like to continue to hold taxes where they are and not take this increase. I respect what trustee Bond has said. I think we're an example, and I think local governments are an example of we're doing more with less, and I think that the state and federal government should look at the local government and see what we're doing, and then copy us, and then maybe we wouldn't be in the circumstances that we're in. But I'm going to, I'd like to see the taxes stay where they are, unless, of course, a property wasn't fully assessed, and then we would go after that.
How much cost on a $150,000 house or $250,000? What was the, I know it was like Stan said, it was nominal. How much was it? 10 bucks or...
Actually, it was over.
Eight bucks.
For the average home in Montgomery, it's $2.10.
That's what I mean, that's not even, I used to say a pack of cigarettes, but cigarettes are higher. I used to use the old Alange, and that was bad, when I always said a six-pack of beer, and that went up. So really, for the price, I can't see, I can't see not raising it. It's not raised that much. I mean, it's just trying to stay even, and we're not even staying even at that price. But for that kind of money, that's, to me, people use that much by letting their car idle on the driveway.
I have some, I get, let me rephrase it. I'm a little uncomfortable with, in fact, we're going to start doing tax rebates out of our road funds, so we're going to be sending a small number of residents, based on what we heard of how many people have put in for that so far. We'll be sending them $45, and yet if we move ahead with the tax levy, okay, we'll give us a couple dollars back. To me, it just, I'm just, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that. I'd rather just see us freeze it, and we have, how many homes in the village?
Approximately 6,000, plus or minus.
Well, approximately, roughly a third so far have put in to get that rebate, so I, I'm more inclined to freeze it at this point.
Okay.
Well, that, that's a good question, too. I mean, I didn't put it in for it, and I'm not gonna. I think there's a lot of people that just said, keep my money, put it through the road, the pothole in front of my house, Todd. That's what I'd say, instead of saying, everybody has the opportunity to get the money. They had plenty of notification, we sent out a lot of letters, they all know about it. If they don't turn it back in, then a lot of people are, I, I figure you forgot about it, so they're $45 out, or they just said, put it through the pothole in front of my house, there it is, forget it. And they had a chance.
Right.
And the $2.10, everybody spends $2 a day on something they didn't really need, and this goes for the material that Todd puts in the pothole, not alone the labor. I'm done.
All right. Doug?
I, I've had conversations with both of my counterparts here, on both sides of this aisle, and I actually am in the middle of it because I, I see both sides of it, and I agree that I'm, I'm more opposed to it than I am for it, although it is a small amount. Because it's a small amount, the principle of the thing is, we can hold it. It's not a significant amount of money to our budget, and the oxymoron portion of, we're giving a rebate, but the, here, you can have this, as I take your wallet out of the back pocket, even though it's not a significant amount of money, just, it just doesn't sit right with me, so I'm leaning towards it, I'm opposed to it.
Sounds good. Pete?
I'm opposed to it. I hate the tax like they are.
All right. So anticipating that, Justin has two versions of the ordinance for us today, where we could lower the levy by, what did you say, 16,000 total?
Approximately $16,000, yes.
I see both sides of this, absolutely, so, seeing that the majority is looking to freeze this, I think that we ought to consider that ordinance.
So it's a middle-of-the-road one, or is it freezing it? It's freezing it?
Yeah. We brought, we brought both. One in the package, since nobody had said anything previously, is what was originally done, but we brought...
Unless the property wasn't fully assessed type of...
Well, we'll take any new.
Okay.
This is just keeping...
And that's what we've done the last several years.
Right, yeah. Any new construction, we're obviously adding to the tax rolls. So...
So then do we make a motion to freeze the tax levy? Do we go that way, or do we have to have that ordinance in front of us?
I think we'd make a motion to approve that ordinance. You want to...
That's the copy we'll use, so...
Yeah. Do you want to let us know what the, the total levy amount is? $2 million? Okay.
And then the special service areas are the same, so...
Okay.
Can I just say, so moved? To approve?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I think it's worth mentioning, and I, and I'm totally in support of this, I think it definitely is worth mentioning, that what we're doing eventually is squeezing ourselves, which I think we can continue to do for only so long, so...
It does compound, because the last three years, each time it's gone, we can't make that up in the future, so it starts to compound. And the, for the people that don't go for the rebate, that money is in a separate pot from this money, so it's not like we can say, well, we got that savings we'll use here, because they're in different pots, so...
If I may, it really is a rebate of sales tax money, because it's coming from the non-home rule sales tax. We're just basing it on the average home, so that's why we, that's why we listed it as a property tax rebate, because that's what it's based on. It's actually a rebate of sales tax, so, just clarification on that point, but...
And I know that you know that, and we all know that, but I think there's 17,500 and some other people out there that don't pay attention to the board meetings every day that look at it going, it's the same.
And, and they don't really care which pot you're putting their money into. It's still their money. You can put it in whichever bucket you want to. It's, it's still their money. And I, again, I truly appreciate that staff is trying to get the most money to help run the village as efficiently as we can, and it's unfortunate that, you know, we're trying to hold the line a little bit.
And like I said before, I respect trustee Lee and trustee Bond and the fact that even though it's a minor amount, I understand what you guys want, and it may be time soon to, to look at that next year, but for now, I'd like to hold the status quo.
Well, the attitude of people are, that they don't want any tax increase, period, the end, but I've seen that in all the other governments, in the posture for $2.10, and then later on, for us, they say, oh, we need police vests for 15,000, or we need a leaf, new leaf thing for 15,000, and have everybody say, well, we don't have the money, and say, well, you know, we had the money for $2 a person, and those guys with the leaves out front would pay $2 to have those things picked up, and that's the only thing I'm saying. But I, I know everybody feels, and I'm not, I'm not saying it, it's great for the people, especially for the older people, so, whatever.
I promise you, next year, Justin, I'll support it.
Next year, we'll have grown so much, we won't need it, right?
Justin wrote that down.
We can only hope.
All right, we've had a motion, we've had a second. Any more discussion on that? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
And that goes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to item B, Montgomery Road Phase 1, Alternatives for the Montgomery S-Curve, and I will kick it over to Engineer Wallers.
This is a continuation of the discussion we had at the November 23rd board meeting, and staff is requesting some direction from the board as to what recommendation we want to give to KDOT so they can finish the Phase 1 and wrap it up. So just to recap, there's, I think you have three alternatives that you can select from. The first would be to select either alternate one or three that was presented by the county, with or without any additional comments, and to, just to recap, alternative one was the roundabouts on the S-curve, and alternative three was the straightening of the, of the S-curve. The second alternative you would have to send forward to them was just not to endorse any of the alternatives. You could just, just say, we're not prepared to endorse any. The third recommendation, or the third option, would be to recommend to terminate the Phase 1, and as we discussed on the 23rd, it was either Douglas or Briar Cliff, I have a comment on that in a minute, and then pursue the improvements to the S-curve as part of a, a part of the discussion of jurisdictional transfer, but it would be with separate funds, not federal funds. One of the things that was outstanding after the 23rd meeting was, where should we end the project limits for the federal portion, if we do go that route? So I did talk to KDOT and our staff at the village mat. Collective opinion is it's probably best to carry it through Briar Cliff, because when you do the intersection improvements at Douglas, you're going to have tapers that are going to meet up probably with the widening of Briar Cliff anyway, so you might as well just extend it, end it through Briar Cliff, and take advantage of as much federal money as we can, and it doesn't, I don't think it impacts much at that point. So I, I would say if you choose alternate three, I would terminate it at Briar Cliff. I think that's the best alternative. So that's where we're at. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions?
I actually have a couple of questions. I specifically drove down Montgomery Road tonight to look from, between Douglas and Briar Cliff, if we have the turn lanes, and there are turn lanes up until you get to Anderson Farms, and then it goes down to the two lanes, and then it goes back out to the, the three lanes with the turn into the two different subdivisions. So with this plan, it would just widen that part that is right there by Anderson Farms?
Right, on both sides, yeah.
And then at the intersection of Briar Cliff, would that essentially stay the same, or would we then have two lanes?
No, it would pretty much stay as it is, because we have turn lanes there now. I mean, the taper lengths might change slightly, but it's pretty much built to the correct standard right now. You might add curve and gutter, for example, you know, we're not sure.
Okay, so that would essentially be the only change, is that part that's near Anderson Farms, the farm stand and all of that, in that area. My other question is, if we select one to endorse, the county and the state can still do whatever they want?
Yes, the county would have the final authority to, to accept our recommendation or not, but I think they would look favorably on, on the village's recommendation, based on our, our discussions with them.
Okay, thank you.
When possibly is this going to be done?
Well, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I, I think the next thing, once we get past the Phase 1, would be sometime next year, first quarter, second quarter, we would start discussing with the county whether or not the village wants to take jurisdictional transfer of the road, and then what, what would be the condition that you would accept. And historically, when a community has taken over a county highway, they generally go through rebuild the road completely, and then there's the transfer. I would expect it would be the same type of arrangement, so, but, and we, we have to internally decide for sure, you know, the board has to decide, do you want the roadway? Because there will be responsibilities above what you have now, and then once that's decided, then the next thing would be, is to work out, I think, the broad strokes of a timeline with the county, because the next thing would be a Phase 2 agreement, so they could do the detailed design, and then we would move to Phase 3, and of course, you know, they'll have to secure funding, and I would expect, you know, there's a lot of things probably ahead of us in line, so it, it's going to be, I think, a number of years before it would be done.
I was for the Douglas, but I can see your point going to Briar Cliff, especially if it's more federal money, and maybe by us cutting it off there and not doing the whole curve and buying all the houses and land, and maybe King County would put that above other things, saying, well, they saved us a lot of money, we'll help them with this time limit, but I know federal money's going to be the big project, so, I appreciate all your work you did on this, Pete.
As, as we get into Phase 2 and Phase 3, I know that when we get into federal dollars, and like the widening of Route 30, we try to put things in their five-year plan. Is it the same way with, with the county?
No, Steve, I, I have to go back and look. I'm not positive, I believe so, but I'm not positive, when this, when the county publishes their multi-year plan, but I would believe that would be the case. They generally prioritize their bigger projects and would put them on, you know, their multi-year plan as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think part of the, you know, part of the strength, part of the importance of the Phase 1 is it starts to set your budget, so that you can then actually put it into a multi-year plan, because you know what amount of funding you need to secure.
At this point, this project, we don't have a vested cost associated with this.
We, we agreed to participate in the Phase 1 study. It was approximately, I think, a million-dollar study. We contributed about $70,000 to the project.
And this started, the first planning phase was 10, 20 years ago, wasn't it?
Well, we, I mean, yeah, if you want to go back, I think in, I, I sent to the county just recently, I think, some costs that I did, I think it was 1992 or '95, so we've been talking about it for quite a long time.
Yeah.
We did, as, as we talked about last time, there have been improvements to the S-curve that have been made. You know, we, we changed the pavement composition, so it's less, it's skid resistant, we put better lighting out there, and I think those things have generally helped. But certainly, it's a difficult, you know, area to negotiate, if you're, if you don't pay attention to your speed, which is often the problem that we have with accidents, you will have people crossing over, and you have side swipes and things like that. So it's not without its safety problems, but... So it's not without its safety problems, but, you know, it hasn't been, it, it's not in the 5% of the county. It's not, it's probably not even the 5% of the village in terms of its ranking, you know. We have other intersections that are much worse or areas that are much worse.
Well, the traffic patterns have changed, plus that used to be 55 miles an hour there in the old days. They used to come around that curve in the eighties and you'd be going 55 miles an hour. That was, that was many years ago, but.
Yeah, I think you'd have to have a Corvette to do that, I think.
All right. Any other comments?
I would move for option three extending to Briar Cliff if that's consistent with the staff recommendation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm a supporter of option three because of the impact to property owners. And, and again, as Denny said, I think it'll help, it increases the opportunity for it to be expedited through the county process. And it just seems to make more sense.
Okay, is it, and that's a second?
Op, option three and not alternate three, correct? Option three as far as on this, okay. I agree.
So Stan made a motion and you seconded it. Any discussion?
You're saying go to Briar Cliff, correct?
Yes.
All right, call the roll, please.
Finally, we're saving money too. This is your project to save the money to the government, we just saved them a whole bunch of money. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes. Uh, Carrie Sixo. All right, moving on, we have resolution 2015-012 authorizing the village's share of construction engineering costs for the roadway improvement of the Briar Cliff Road Laffo project. With that, I will kick it over to our public works director, Todd Happenstead.
Yes, Mayor, we're looking for the approval of $356,994, the village's share or participation in the resurfacing of 1.2 miles or approximately thereof, Briar Cliff Boulevard from Route 30 to Montgomery Road. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions?
Excuse me, Todd, do you know the timeframe for when this would start?
This is, to be, to begin in spring, so it's a 2016 project.
Do we know roughly how long the project will take?
I don't know if engineer Wallers can comment, I think it probably all depends on, on the bidding schedules and.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is, go ahead.
The project, because it's, it's a joint project with the federal and state monies, it's actually being led through the IDOT's process. So some of the schedule is kind of set by the state, but I'll get a schedule for you and a working day, completion date for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Are we using MFT dollars for this, or?
Uh, we are.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
For our portion.
Right. All right, if there are any other comments, entertain a motion for approval.
Let me ask Pete. Pete, are they going to take more of that road down so they can build that up with a thicker blacktop so it won't deteriorate so fast?
Yes, the, um.
They are?
We're going to do a, um. I can, I'll double check this, Pete, but the, my recollection is it's a four-inch mill, so we're going to take off four inches and put four inches of new asphalt back on there.
How long you think that's going to last, that road, with all the traffic on there?
I think it'll be 10 years. It does get a lot of loading, but we're going to try to correct some of the crown deficiency to get the water to drain off a little bit better along with the, and then we'll do some patching of the areas that have failed before we resurface.
Thank you, Pete.
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please. We got a motion seconded, we.
No, so moved.
Somebody want to do that then?
Second.
There you go. Now do that.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Thought this was the state of Illinois, that's just, you've seen their committees down there sometimes?
Deem it to be passed.
All right, in that case, thank you for the motion and the second. All right, moving on to item D, which is PSA with EEI for lift station upgrades, design phase. Director Happenstead?
Yes, again, this is a, we're looking for the approval of $72,400 for design costs to begin in this fiscal year. EEI will conduct the design work for the replacement of the Jefferson Street and Route 25 lift stations, both of which have reached the end of their useful life. That, the construction costs and the engineering costs would go through the loan service, I'm sorry, the, the IEP A Water Pollution Control State Revolving Funds Loan Service.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Questions?
Um, I, I think, yes, let me get to it here. So I just wanted to review my, I have notes from our, my budget meeting last year. So I just wanted to make sure that I understand the steps that we're doing. So this design cost in this fiscal year, that was covered by the increase in the water rates, correct?
The construction of it?
The, the design costs that are going to be in the, in the current year, correct? Is that, is that what you said, Todd? It would be in the current year?
Yes, the, the design costs that we're seeking approval for are in the current year. I'd have to turn to Justin as far as, was that covered in the water rate?
We did, because we did an increase in the water rates to, specifically to work on these lift stations.
We did increase them. Engineer Wallers had, EEI had completed paperwork that was sent to the Illinois EPA, pre-work, if you will, for the loan. And it actually shows that we would need to increase it a little bit further to do this work.
I'm sorry, that we need to increase?
Increase it, the rate a little bit further to do this work.
It's not the water rate, it would.
It's not the water rate.
Sewer.
It's a sewer rate.
Okay, thank you. And then I have that we are doing the engineering in 16 and then we would pursue the loan or get the funding in 17, correct? Are the steps correct?
The engineering would be paid locally and then all of the construction would be paid for with a IEP A loan in fiscal year 17.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Should we just vote or does anybody want to make a motion on it first?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay. Thank you. Carrie Sixo. All right, we're going to introduce E, F, G, and H together and then we'll vote on them separately. We have ordinances 1693, 94, 95, and 96.
Okay, yes, thank you. You may recall these were acted upon a few months ago. They're amendments to a couple of special service areas. However, after receiving some feedback from some of the landowners in these areas, we made a couple of minor tweaks to the language. So we'll be starting the process over. These are just the proposing ordinances. So there still will be a public hearing that's scheduled to be in February and then the establishing ordinance 60 days after that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Motion?
So moved.
Well, actually, hold on. Yeah, can I get a motion on ordinance 1693?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Thank you, I carry six zero. And then item F, ordinance 1694 proposing an SSA for Speedway.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yep.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay. That carries six zero. And then item G, ordinance 1695 proposing an SSA for O'Reilly's.
Second.
Second by Marisak, call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Carrie Sixo. And item H, ordinance 1696 proposing an SSA for Michaels.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Thank you, that was fun. All right.
That felt like the state, didn't it? Yes, yes.
All right, items for discussion, we have item A, liquor license requests from George Chaudis. With that, I'll ask the chief of police for an introduction on this item.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce George and his daughter Sarah. They're in the audience here. They're going to come forward and speak. George is going to have, talk about a plan that he's going to request a Class F liquor license, which is wine and beer for consumption on the property. And along with that comes video gaming. So tonight, I'd like to introduce Sarah and George.
Hello, my name is Stacy. I'm George's daughter.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. My name is Stacy, George's daughter. We've had a building where we have, haven't rented for over four years, it's emptied. We have had on numerous occasions, people come in and say that it'd be a good idea to bring in slot machines and that it would be a great opportunity to bring in our area and of course, bring in liquor license as well, so. And my, that's my dad, George.
Well, we don't need exactly for the beer, but, but by, according what the company say to put the machines, we have to have beer, you know? That's the only way we need that, otherwise would be without. And I'm trying to bring more people over there, I don't know, it's, sometimes Montgomery looks like a ghost town, you know? I'm trying to bring more people down here, you know? I'm not looking to make more problems, I'm trying to make it better for Montgomery.
Can we, I'm sorry, are you planning to serve food or is it strictly a bar and the gaming and that's all you're looking to do?
I have, I have to, I have to open up a door, door over there and connect with the restaurant. If they needs food, I can serve food.
So is this an extension of the restaurant or is this a separate standalone facility?
This is separate, but it's connecting close to the restaurant. I can open door and go through over there. Either, either way, I can go through over there, I can go, I can put smaller refrigerator inside and, and serve something. Have smaller refrigerator and put the beer inside, as long as those customers, they want to have beer when they play.
But it would have different hours than the restaurant, correct? Or is it only going to be open during the restaurant hours? Certainly do applaud your effort to try and bring people downtown Montgomery, to bring people here. We're, we're always, and I don't mean to speak for the board at all, we're always a bit leery about the video gaming just because it's new, because we have, you know, we have some in town already. Not to say that, that we wouldn't do that, you know, we don't regulate the gambling. So if we were to give a liquor license, we have no control over the gaming part. And so that just creates some uncertainty. So I just kind of wanted to share that with, with you that what we've been trying to do in the past is have somebody request a different class of license that would require a certain amount of food be, be served. So that way, it's more like a restaurant that has gaming, we have a lot of those, as opposed to a, a video gaming hall or a gambling hall that happens to serve, you know, some food. So that way, it's more of a family atmosphere and less of a, of a gaming facility. So that's a little bit of the history, what we've been through and certainly would entertain some comments or thoughts from the board.
We've turned down a few gaming places already. These people would walk in a different door. I mean, they're not coming through the restaurant. You are, you are renting a building out and have a door.
I have two options. One to come from the restaurant and the second option to, to use the second door from the store. I have two options, one from the, you can go from, through the restaurant or I can put refrigerator over there and take care of the people to the other room.
But you're not doing this, you're renting the place out, correct? I mean, it's not your gaming hall, correct? You're, I mean, you're renting it?
No, no, I, I do it myself, I run around myself, not renting it.
But it's not part of the restaurant. That's the part that I, that's where we don't have a problem with it, is when it's part of the restaurant. It's not an issue typically with this board historically. When it's a casino, looking for a liquor license is, is something that this board has voted against consistently. Where it's not, do you follow where I'm coming from? If it's a restaurant that's putting some video poker machines over in the corner and they have a liquor license and they're serving some liquor and selling a bunch of food, the board hasn't typically had a problem with that. When you try to get a liquor license for the purpose of getting the gaming, because that's the only way you can get it, this board has been pretty staunch on saying, no, we don't want casinos in Montgomery. We, we really don't support having a casino here. And that's really what it's, what it is.
You have a lot of around here, more, more places. What, what, what the difference does it make? You have so many different places here. The guest house has machines, the VFW have machines, all over here have machines.
And they're all eating facilities, they're all restaurants with gaming, not gaming with alcohol. But it's not part of the restaurant, it's separate. So we can't control, once we vote the liquor license, we can't control that you're only open during the hours of the restaurant and you're serving food, we don't control that. You close that door at nine o'clock and the gaming hall can stay open until midnight, we don't control that anymore. Once we've granted the license, we, we no longer have any control over that. And that's where we have a problem, is we, if it's tied in with the restaurant, it's tied to the food. The food sales become a part of the master plan. And I don't mean to speak for the board, I just, historically, that's what we've done.
It's the Class G, that's what I was looking up, were the different classes of license. The Class G license is the one we've typically been granting, where you have 50% of your sales comes from food.
Whereas it's not part of?
Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering, would you be able to expand your restaurants? And I'm assuming that you don't have a liquor license at the current restaurant, is that correct? So I can't, I don't want to be advising, but I, I don't understand why then they couldn't just apply for the Class G license and expand the restaurant.
Yeah, because they'd have enough, you'd have enough food, but you understand what we're saying? We don't want that other door opened up where anybody can walk in and just gamble and walk out the door. If you close that door up and you can't get in there and you can get in from your restaurant, it's entire, now you're connected to the restaurant. Do you understand now?
And it's tied into the food sales, right. We, we, as, as trustee Marisak was saying, we've been much more comfortable with granting those type of licenses.
As this is right now, I'm against it. I would be, I would reconsider if it was somehow related to the restaurant, if it was part of the restaurant. I would, I would, at least my opinion, I would probably grant that.
Okay, thank you very much. But you give licenses for a lot of restaurants, but not for liquor licenses?
Again, if the restaurant wants to have the liquor license and the gaming, that's, we don't have a problem with that. We have a problem with just liquor and gaming.
If I get, if I get licenses for the restaurant to serve beer and I open up the door connecting to the other room, will it be okay?
We, we would discuss that. If that was the plan, then, then that would, that changes everything. That changes the whole dynamic when it's part of the restaurant as opposed to a separate entity that just happens to have a door that goes in there. as opposed to a separate entity that just happens to have a door that goes in the restaurant. That's what we're talking about.
There's nothing of that nature that this board has approved. The other thing that would be important is that the, the gaming operation in the restaurant, in my opinion, should have the same hours. It would not be helpful for the restaurant to close at six, and the gaming operation to stay open till midnight.
I agree.
The VFW standards are different, they're a veterans organization, and the state statutes treat them differently.
But I don't think there's anyplace else in town that I can think of that has just liquor and gaming, no food, which is what you're asking for. Beer and wine sales and gaming, because it's not, it's not tied to the restaurant. George's isn't getting a liquor license and putting in some video poker machines. It's a separate deal completely, not tied to the food. It seems like it's confusing, but it's not, it's, it's because you're trying to do that as a separate entity. We don't have anyplace that does that, I don't think so.
Well, two things, one, the only place that we have is a gas station. The gas station on Orchard Road doesn't serve food. They're considered by state law to be a truck stop, so it's really not anything that we approved. But I just wanted to add that you've had a very successful business, a restaurant, in town for decades. And if you come in here and request a liquor license for a new business somewhere else, we, at least my opinion would be, is to do this, to do like you presented, I would probably be against that, I am against that. But if you came in and, and wanted a Class G, which is for your restaurant, and assuming it's bigger, or whatever it is that you wanted to do, we would, I would support that, because you have a successful restaurant, that's the method that we've seen, we've, Taco Madre did the same thing, where they had a successful restaurant, and then they asked for the liquor license, and I don't think he's doing gaming, but.
Yes.
I was there, I, first time I've been there, they're there now. So, I'm trying to convey our, just our concern with a gambling hall. And if it was tied to the restaurant, it's a different conversation, one that we've been very supportive of in the past.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. All right, with that, we'll move on to item B for discussion, which is the tax increment financing, District Number Two rebate of funds. And Director Van Warren, summary.
Thank you, President Brody. Summary on this, the Village Board approved resolution twenty fourteen dash zero zero one in January of twenty fourteen. Essentially, what the resolution says is that Village staff needs to prepare a report every year as to what the increment in the district is, and whether that is due to just a general increase overall in the EAV, or if there were improvements to properties within that TIF district. So the Village staff has prepared the report. We did receive fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars in TIF Number Two during fiscal year twenty sixteen. The amount that is due to improvements within the district is fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, which would stay in the TIF district. And then the net of approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars would be rebated to the other taxing bodies. I have talked to the county that actually, those funds actually go back to the county. We write a check to the county, and then the county is the, the entity that actually distributes it, distributes it to the taxing districts. According to the resolution, the board does have thirty days to review this. Or if there is a consensus by the board to move forward, we can proceed prior to that thirty days. We're not looking for an approval, we're just looking for an overall consensus of the board's thoughts.
You know, if you recall, this is based on the concerns of the fire district on, you know, losing funds, and so that we'd say to any of that, just incremental growth, we would rebate back to the districts. It has to go back proportionally to the, all the taxing bodies, and so that's what the county will then will get it and distribute it based on that.
I have no problems with that.
To refresh my memory, did we have a timeframe in mind for how long this rebate period would last?
I believe it goes on throughout.
I don't think there was, I was on that steering committee, I don't think we did do a timeframe for that.
I mean, it's up to the board, I guess.
Yeah.
That's how it was left.
So it's, it will be an annual event for us to visit this, okay.
The resolution itself has May twenty seventeen as the, the expiration date. However, there was information put into there so that should future boards want to look at this again, that they would understand where this board was thinking when they approved that resolution, so. But I, I will have to check to make sure, but I think there is a, if it's not changed by the board within a certain amount of time, then it rolls over.
I, I recall that, that it was written so that it doesn't require board action for it to continue. But board action can stop it after the thirty, within the thirty day period. So that if somebody wanted to pull it back later, it wouldn't, it basically tries to stay in place.
Well, I think that's the agreement we made with the stakeholders, so I think we should just move forward with it.
Yes, I would support that.
Yep. Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, the last item for discussion this evening is Montgomery in Motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, what is Montgomery in Motion? Senior staff has looked at this as a potential marketing tool for the Mill District. So Montgomery in Motion to us is the river, the trails, the parks. Montgomery in Motion is also kayaking on the Fox River, jogging along the trails along the river, fishing, the River Run Event, the reuse of Gray's Mill, the new Riverview Restaurant, and Montgomery Fest. Montgomery in Motion is senior staff's idea for a marketing program that we believe would help to jumpstart redevelopment activity within the Mill District. And when we looked at this, we also looked at the same thing in terms of what the state recommends through the Illinois Municipal League. And in their recent publication, they talked about what does downtown redevelopment mean, and what questions should any size municipality look at. So some things to contemplate that should be the goal, or what we're trying to achieve, is to look at what we're trying to achieve, and what does that mean? What's the vision? What kind of special places do we have in our downtown, and what can we build on? Who are the customers, and how do we keep them as they come to downtown? And how do we keep them coming back? Review what other communities have done, both good and bad. There's not a one size fits all answer to these development or redevelopment questions. How do we best spend the reinvestment dollars, which are limited? And who are our development partners? And you have to think outside the box a little bit, it can't just be the municipality. It has to be other agencies, other groups, even private individuals. Then how do you measure the results? And what's the most productive downtown activity that you can build on? In that publication, they talked about twenty percent of the effort generally generates eighty percent of the overall growth of profit, so how do you zero in on that twenty percent that works? So with those things in mind, staff has looked at what other things that we've already done in the past. And those items include a re-review of the two thousand and five Village Center Mill District Enhancement Plan, the two thousand and nine TOD Park and Ride Location Study, and then the tie-in to the recently approved two thousand and fourteen Land Use Master Plan. And how does that address the Mill District and the downtown activities? With those things in mind, we have to understand what the community needs are, and how we allocate funds, create attractive walkable places that give you a sense of place when you're within the downtown area of the Mill District. How do we diversify the economy of the Mill District? Think creatively about, outside the box, like I've already mentioned, in terms of financial partners. We have to look at the idea of supporting new housing options at a much higher density in the downtown to generate the population that goes along with millennials and baby boomers that are looking for a different lifestyle than maybe a suburban half acre lot. And what they're generally saying about millennials and baby boomers is they're looking for an experience, a place that has transportation options, that has entertainment options, and food options. Not just cutting the grass on the weekend, they want activity in both those sectors. So staff has already started to look at how some of those elements are incorporated, including a review of our codes and our zoning ordinance. We're gonna be bringing forward some form-based code items in the zoning ordinance in the first quarter of the next year. We're in the process of working with an illustrator to develop some visual images that can be part of a PowerPoint presentation that we take to other stakeholders. And meeting with other civic groups, we've already talked a little bit about this with the Rotary Foundation, and the Chamber, and the Plan Commission. So that's our vision to start, and we think that the slogan, Montgomery in Motion, plays right into that. And we'd like to get your opinion on how that sounds, what your feelings are about it as we move forward.
Awesome. I would love to see, and I know it's the Mill District, but we talked about Montgomery in Motion, some portion of that plan to help tie the bike path in, because there's a little bit of a gap with the bike path here.
Right.
To be able to tie that in possibly with Ocot Road somehow, that bike path, so that we can get that connectivity. But I think it's great, I, I like the idea of marketing it. The, that meeting Jeff, you and I attended, Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, had the gentleman from the Illinois.
Tourism Board?
Yeah, Tourism Board come, and, and I'm wondering if there's some grant opportunities through the tourism. I'm not sure how that would work, if it's, they're look, they're probably looking for existing opportunities to tie in, but I think that they, they may be supportive with some knowledge as well.
Obviously, I spoke with both of you at the Rotary Foundation meeting. We brainstormed some great ideas that Rotary would partner with the Village to draw more people down, and to just create some activities that we could call our own, and certainly don't wanna give any of those away right now, but we, we came up with some great ideas.
I think over the last several years, or even decades, people have had, you know, fine ideas, great ideas, for the downtown, Village Hall being one of them. But we have some momentum now, and this is, I really have to applaud staff in, in generating this idea, 'cause this is taking the momentum that we have and moving it towards something, moving it in a direction far beyond what a, what a, a study, you know, can do or will do. So I, I appreciate that, I'm very excited about it, and look forward to the future of that project.
Is there easement along the river? Is there an easement back there?
No, not really.
Okay, so the property owner's owned to the bank of the river?
Right. Except for, you know, the Fox Valley Park District properties.
On the, which is on the other side?
I did want to mention collaboration with the Park District. And I think a hidden potential treasure in this, in the Island Park, which is, remains largely undeveloped, but could be a beautiful floral and walkway area. It's in my long-range dream to see that be an attraction that would.
Definitely one of the stakeholders that we wanna involve in the, in the process. And both the Fox Valley Park District, District and the Oswego Land Park District, because that picks up just south of thirty. And we'd like to see, hopefully, something evolve on the Avaya property as well, south of thirty. And we've talked about that with the Plan Commission as well. So there's a private planner that's doing some work for the property owner on that property now to develop some concepts that they'd like to market to potential purchasers, that that should be coming forward in the next couple of months as well.
Terrific.
I think we're surrounded by a lot of Park District property, especially Fox Valley, and I think they're willing to work with us, and even little things like the concerts. We do more concerts here now than any other place for them. There's heavily attended here compared to other spots, and that's why we have more than anybody else. And just to pick up of that, you get a couple hundred people there all the time. If you had more of them, you're gonna have more, a couple hundred people downtown, so. Just little things like that into bigger projects, like an extension of the bike path and things like that. But the Park District is definitely, because they surround us, east and west.
All right. Thank you for working on that.
All right, with that, we'll move on to new or unfinished business?
I have a quick question, this is for.
She always gets to go first, Steve.
Oh.
That's okay.
I have two items, thank you, thank you, Trustee Youngerman.
Land Commissioner Bettinger.
Yeah, it's his. Yes.
Call me Tom, I don't know. I wanted to make a couple comments about the crime-free housing that you talked about at the last meeting. First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the staff, and thank you to Attorney Julian. For those of you that don't know or don't remember, this is my background. Twenty years of residential housing, seven years onsite management. Yes, the big companies have this in place, they've had it in place for years. When I read through this, I was really, really pleased what was in, what was included in there. And I, I'm just, I'm very happy with it, so I, I wanted to say bravo, and I think it will be very valuable to our landlords and the community.
Can you say, based on the discussion that took place last meeting, we have added a section on the fireworks. We did not add about defining the gang activity, it was felt that it was better to leave it as it was, it gave us a little more flexibility than if we defined it too narrowly. So, but we have made the change for fireworks, and so we will be moving forward with it then.
And I think Trustee Bond had made the comment about trying to control the capacity, meaning the number of people in the house. That falls under HUD, they set the standard, Housing and Urban Development, they will set the standard. And if there's an overcrowded house, if you call them, they'll send an inspector out and take care of it.
Very good, okay.
My other item, I wanted to ask about the Railroad Quiet Zone study. Can, can you give a status on that?
So the, the first step in doing the Railroad Quiet Zone is we have to do an assessment of the existing intersections. In order to be able to do the assessment, we need to have the Burlington Northern file the update, the inventory for the Watkins Crossing, and they haven't done that yet. And we, we're probably averaging an email a week to them, asking when they're going to update it, and we just haven't gotten any response from them. So that's the status, we're waiting on the railroad so that we can get the information that, that allows us to have the first meeting with, with all the stakeholders.
Okay, thank you.
The railroad has picked up everything. Last week, they picked up the rails, they picked up the steel, and it will be next spring, so, for the Webster Crossing.
My question is for Director Public Works. Can you give us an update on the water containment system for the, the fire hydrant out in front of Public Works? Have we found who was stealing water?
Well, I, it's hard, it's hard to quantify how many people might be taking water unauthorized. We have identified one user. It's hard to, again, quantify how much water that they have taken, but we did estimate a loss, and they actually just paid for that today. As for your initial question, the bulk water fill station that was approved by the board was ordered, has been delivered, has been installed. There's a software component that we're scheduled to resolve on Monday with the vendor. It involves not only public work staff, but finance staff, and once all of. And once all of that's in place, then we will proceed with the changeover for the 20-some bulk water customers that we're aware of. At that time, we lock out the hydrant that's right in front of the station, and everybody buying bulk water is forced to use the station. That will certainly help us better quantify how much bulk water we're actually selling versus the previous on-your-honor practice that we've tolerated. It also will help us to identify anybody that's hooked up to hydrants, because we know they shouldn't be. So at that point, we will also be doing some training, not only with police, community development, public works staff, anybody that's out in the community. That may even extend then to residents of the community, as far as if you see something, you know, speak up. And I think taking a strong stance on how we proceed, and I've discussed some of that with the chief, when people are caught taking water unauthorized, certainly we'll get the word out amongst the contractor community and those people. So hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, my next, I know we still have hydrant meters out. Are we in the process of collecting those? How are we doing as far as collecting those?
Yes. We've collected only a few so far. The idea was to get this bulk water station in place so that there's an option there. We've worked with some business owners to collect them. We're actually working with a local business owner now to move them away from using a hydrant meter to perform the needs of their business. They're looking to pull a permit for a dedicated supply. So we are certainly working with people. The option to lease a hydrant meter will still be permitted in extreme circumstances, when you do a property demolition, a landscape project, any large magnitude project that's kind of concentrated in one area. Those are certainly reasons why we would consider leasing a hydrant. But as for contractors that kind of roam around, they will be forced to come to the bulk water station, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be sending a letter out to those customers to recall the meters that are out there. And then we'll decide who should get a meter back and who will be forced to use the bulk water station. If they fail to return the meter by the set date for calibration and this administrative change, then they'll be charged the, or they'll basically forfeit their security deposit, which is sizable, so.
Well, what do we charge as security deposit for a hydrant meter right now?
It depends on the size of the hydrant meter. The large meters, I believe, are $7.50, and the smaller meters are a lot less expensive. The security deposits have been in place for a number of years. And now the hydrant value, replacement value, I should say, has actually outpaced the security deposit. So that's another thing that will be adjusted going forward. We want to be able to recruit the replacement value if the hydrant becomes damaged or lost or stolen.
Are we talking about when we potentially lease a hydrant meter, are we going to charge a larger security deposit?
Yes, yes. So the larger security deposit for the large meter, I believe my recommendation was going to be about $1,200.
I was thinking like $2,500. We'd get them back.
Yeah, that's entirely possible. I mean, we can charge as much as we like. It's a security deposit. So if the contractor's playing by the rules and returns it in a timely fashion, there's no harm, no foul. They're only paying the water rate for out of town, three times out of town for that bulk water purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
One more comment, if I may. Those, we've had 153 nominations for the Holiday Decorations Award Program. And judging for that will be Wednesday evening of this week. So be sure, if you're inclined to compete for that competition or even to share the Christmas cheer, turn your lights on. The judges will be out between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., judging and giving awards.
Awesome.
And all I can say is 68,000 people watched the Packers win again. And for you Bears fan, it's like the Cubs fan, wait till next year.
Thank you for that uplifting message.
Yes, that's an update.
That was important.
All right, hearing nothing else, future meetings, you can watch Ohio State lose the Fiesta Bowl on January 1st. We have Plan Commission on January 7th, and you can see the meetings after that. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for, actually, two purposes. One being to discuss the employment of an employee, and also litigation which is filed and pending.
Second?
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee. Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
All right, call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Hines. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas. And thank you, staff. Thank you, Village Board. Merry Christmas, guys.